You are now live.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the January 4th, 2022, meeting of the City of Stonecrest Planning Commission to order. Happy New Year to everyone. And at this time, I would like to ask everyone to please mute your microphones on your computers and on your phones. If you are not being recognized to speak. The Planning Commission is the recommending body to the mayor and city council. And we use standards and guidelines in conjunction with the public hearing to assist us in formulating recommendations to the city council. The presiding officer will call cases on the agenda for public hearing. First, the presiding officer shall recognize the community development staff to provide a summary of the application and present any recommendations or results of their investigation. Staff shall then make a presentation of the case. After which, members of the Planning Commission may ask questions of the staff or city representatives providing the reports. The applicant shall receive a time allotment of 10 minutes to present their case. The time is kept by the planning assistant. The applicant may choose to use their entire allotment or reserve time for rebuttal. Any member of the commission may ask questions after recognition by the presiding officer to the applicant or the agent of the applicant. The period of questions from the Planet Commission is not deducted from the applicant's 10-minute period. Opposition is granted a time period of 10 minutes per application at the public hearing to present data, evidence, and opinions. If a large number of people are present and wish to speak in opposition, it is advisable to designate a spokesperson to make the presentation. Those wishing to speak must complete a Stonecrest Public Comments Rule Sheet before speaking and submit it to the secretary. The city is not obligated to provide the full 10-minute period to opponents if they elect not to use their time, and the opposition is not granted any time for rebuttal. Any member of the commission, upon recognition by the presiding officer, may ask questions of any person given public comment. After completing this process, the presiding officer will indicate that the public hearing is closed. And upon closing the hearing, the Planet Commission can no longer be addressed by the applicant or opposition. At such time, the presiding officer will call for a motion, and if properly seconded, will call for a vote on the matter. The presiding officer will then state the vote and recommendation for the record. I'll ask that all present please act courteously and refrain from having any noise on this virtual meeting. Please make sure that your microphones are all mute unless you are recognized by the chair. At this time, we'd like to do roll call to recognize the Planning Commission members in attendance. District 1, JWE. District 2, Commissioner Joyce Walker.
Here.
District 4, Commissioner Pearl Hollis.
Here.
District 5, Commissioner Cheryl Moore Mathis.
I'm here.
And District 3, Eric Hubbard, and I am the chair for the Planning Commission. So let the roll call note that all commissioners are present except for District 1 Commissioner JWE. Hopefully, he'll be able to join us shortly. At this time, commissioners, I would like to ask if there is a motion that we have approval of the minutes from December 7, 2021 meeting?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to offer a motion that we accept the minutes from the December 7, 2021 meeting. I sent them that motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. Then we have approval of the minutes. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect unanimous four out of four voted to approve the minutes. At this time, we're going to go into a presentation by Director Jim Summerbill.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm just hoping that we can do some housekeeping very briefly because I see on the agenda you submitted to us that we do not have an approval for the agenda on this particular agenda.
Yes.
So I'd like to offer a motion that the agenda be amended to include the approval of the agenda. And follow that up with a motion to ask that the agenda be approved by adding that one item.
Okay, so you want a motion to approve the agenda?
Okay.
Okay. I'll second that motion that we have to approve the agenda. Now, we'd like to vote to approve the agenda. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, it's approved by the four commissioners present.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, we will have a presentation by Director Jim Summerbill. Mr. Summerbill.
Yes, good evening, Plank Commission. I have just a real few announcements to make. I guess I'll share my screen real quick here. Let's see what's going on. Basically, you know that the state of local emergency has still been extended. In fact, the COVID rates over the holidays for the city were really very high. I believe it was all sort of record numbers. So for the foreseeable future, we're still doing virtual meetings coming up, at least at the end of the month. My guess is probably going into February, but we'll see. We do have a scheduled planning information meeting, a community planning information meeting coming up on January 13. As part of that, because I haven't really seen any cases been submitted yet for our February agenda, what my intention is, we're going to make that more of a zoning summit and talk about the text amendments that will be on your agenda in February. In fact, we'll talk really about primarily the clarification of definitions and terms that are in there. So what you'll see in your packet next time, and don't be frightened by it, will be an actual complete zoning ordinance copy with all the amendments in it. So it's about 400 pages, but trust me, we didn't change all 400 pages. I'll highlight the changes that are in there, but given the nature of the change, it's the only way and the best way to really kind of present it to you. This way, too, you can see how it all fits together. Let's see here. Like I say, our next meeting will be February 1st that's coming up. And I will say that we also do, we also posted a new version of what has been adopted in zoning warrants on our planning and zoning website. If you go there, you'll see once a version of the zoning warrant stated November, I believe, 22nd, which was the last time that city council approved the last text amendments. The last round of text amendments you all heard last month will be going before then this month. So those who have not been included yet because they're not official. So I invite you to go look at that. If you have any questions about what's in the zoning warrants now, it's best if you understand it, it'll be there. So with that, this is my presentation, and I'll turn it back over to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Summerbill. At this time, all business, seeing that there are none, we can go into new business for tonight, and I'm going to turn it back over to you, Director Summerbill, for the first item on the agenda.
Well, actually, our presentation night will be made by Kedra Jackson, who's our new senior planner. By means of doing this, I'll introduce Kedra to y'all. Kedra, if you want to say a few words of introduction yourself, but she's an experienced planner. Worked for many other jurisdictions, and I'll let her just say a few words about her experience and background before we jump into it.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Jackson.
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name is Kiper Jackson. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure you can hear me. I am the new senior planner here with the City of Stonecrest. I have over 16 years' experience in planning and and I'm looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. So with that said, we can get started, if that's okay with you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so tonight, we are presenting 8X-21-003, the applicant Battle Law PC for Shaw DeKalb Properties. This property is located at 2931 and 2939 Miller Road. And as you can see, the parcel numbers are listed on the screen here.
I don't see the screen.
You don't see the screen.
Are you sharing your PowerPoint?
I am.
Yeah, I see your email.
Yeah, yeah, all your emails.
All your emails are showing.
Just my email, okay? Let's see here.
All right, I can pop it up if that helps you out.
Sure, that would be fine.
Okay, let me go ahead and share it. Just tell me when to change the slide.
Sure.
All right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, there we go.
Okay. Okay, so again, we're discussing 2931 and 2939 Miller Road, Decatur, Georgia, 335. The property is currently zoned light industrial in DeKalb County and office institutional. The applicant is seeking to annex this is two parcels into the City of Stonecrest. Remaining, the zoning will remain as light industrial once annexed in the City of Stonecrest. The acreage is 19, 19.1 acres. And if we can go to the next slide, Jim. So again, there are two parcels. One parcel is undeveloped. The second parcel do, it has two buildings located on that site. Around this area is mostly industrial and residential. You have residential to the west of the property. And to the north of the property, you have industrial zonings. The city boundary is located along the western edge of the subject property, and it meets the 1/8 contiguous area requirement for the 100% annexation method per the state law. So again, the existing zoning is light industrial and office institutional per DeKalb County zoning ordinance. Once annexed, the property will be light industrial. Here is the site plan on how the site will look once developed. You have the two buildings, as I mentioned earlier, that are currently existing. If you look to the south of the south site plan, you see the green and gray building. Those buildings are existing. The buildings to the west of that will be new new construction. And the building, rectangular shaped building to the north of the existing buildings will be also of new construction. Here are the standards that staff reviewed in order to determine if the proposed use will be in sync with City of Stonecrest zonings. The zoning review that staff reviewed states that the property is located within the highway corridor character of DeKalb County Comprehensive Plan. Also, the intended use of this site is in keeping with both the proposed city future land use designation of light industrial and the existing character of the area. Here, the light industrial character area designation intends to identify areas that are appropriate for industrial type uses. The location of this area shall preserve any appeal and appearance of residential, commercial areas from the prospective intrusion of light industrial. These areas consist of areas used in low-intensity manufacturing, including wholesale trade and distribution activities that do not generate excessive noise, vibration, air pollution, or other nuisance characteristics. Is this proposed use suitable? Yes, staff bill that this proposed use is suitable. And the adjacent development and nearby properties are in sync with the proposed zoning category. Does this property has reasonable economic use? The zoning is essentially remaining the same, and it does have economic use. The applicant is seeking to come into Stonecrest to allow for a movie studio, which is currently not allowed in DeKalb County's light industrial zoning, but it is allowed in cities, in the city's light industrial zoning. Do you affect the use or usability of the nearby properties? The proposed zoning proposal is not anticipated to have a negative impact on the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby properties. Conditions giving either approval or disapproval. The applicant is willing to meet all conditions proposed by staff. Will this property have adverse effect on environmental or historic sites? There are currently no historical building sites, districts, or any resources along this area that will affect the subject property. Will the zoning proposal result in a use that will or could cause excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools? Due to the low-impact nature of the intended use, the proposed use will not cause an excessive or burdensome on utilities or have any demands on schools. The road access to the property is existing, and there are no transportation improvements that are necessary to accommodate this use. Adverse effect environmental and natural resources. The proposed use is designed and maintained as required by city and state regulations. The use should not have adverse impact on the environment or surrounding resources. Staff has recommend an approval with conditions for 8X-21-003 for the rezoning of the parcel light industrial to the designation of the subject property to light industrial on the Stonecrest, excuse me, Stonecrest Future Land Use map. The condition shall read, "The applicant is subject to comply with the conceptual site plan submitted." And I'm sorry, I have to move this to the side. "The applicant is subject to comply with the conceptual site plan submitted as part of the annexation application titled Stonecrest Studios, prepared by Jacob and Hefner Associates, submitted in December 2021, and cited as figure six located in your staff report." And that concludes the presentation by staff. The applicant does have a presentation. They would like staff to show you or present to you once you're ready for their presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jackson. First, let me note for the minute, Commissioner JW Edie, District 1, is present. So I just wanted to make sure we put that on record. Commissioner Edie is present. Okay, commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Jackson?
Yes, this is Commissioner Walker, District 2. I have a quick question for her. In the annexation request, it said that, and I'm sure you all have already read this, the city has notified DeKalb County of the proposed annexation, and to date, no objections have been raised. But should we have something in writing on this, or are we just taking DeKalb's word that they don't have any objections, or who have we spoken with regarding this? Ms. Jackson.
Sure, so there were a packet was sent to the DeKalb County Commissioners' Office. I have not received any feedback or any documentation from the commissioners with any objections to this annexation. And we did that at least, I believe we did it no less than 45 days prior to this hearing.
Well, has someone been in contact with them, or do you not think that this is an issue, maybe an issue down the road?
I don't see an issue if the applicant is seeking to DNS from DeKalb County and annex into the city. The applicant would need to first notify DeKalb County of the DNS station. At that time, the commissioners can object to the DNSation, but we have not received any documentation of a rejection. And would you agree, Jim?
Yeah, just to, I guess to highlight that, it's not typical to find objection from the county unless there's something, you know, some serious change in land use or something that they're going to object to in terms of, again, maybe a use that would not be compatible with what's in the county. We've had, you know, we've had two other annexations so far this year, and in both situations, the county didn't say anything either. It's more like, you know, and technically, their objection wouldn't need to be raised before, you know, the city council took action, which is slated right now, at least in February. So they've got plenty of time to react to it, but again, we haven't heard anything. I don't anticipate hearing any objection to it, but you know, I don't find that unusual, really.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any other commissioners with questions for Ms. Jackson? Okay, seeing that there are none, thank you, Ms. Jackson. If the applicant is here, he or she can speak now.
Good morning.
Good. Good evening.
Good evening. Tim, let me take over first, and then I'll introduce you. That's Tim Shaw with Shaw Almaxx, and also what we hope will be Stonecrest Studios. This is Michelle Battle with Battle Law, 3562 Habersham at Tucker, sorry, sorry, Habersham at Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, 30084. I'd like to start first by clarifying something with regards to the proposed annexation. This is a statutory 100% annexation request. DeKalb County has exactly 30 days, no more, no less, to respond to whether or not they are raising any objections to the proposed annexation. To date, they have not raised any objection. Quite honestly, I'd like that 30 days to pass without any objection, so that we can move forward. Once 30 days is passed, there's nothing that they can do. It just moves forward in the process. They are very aware of what that process is. It's been done throughout the county. And we don't believe that this is something that should be objectionable to them. This property was rezoned. I handled the initial rezoning of it for Shaw Almaxx, which is a vulcanization company. They make presses and other machinery for other companies. And, you know, once they got started on the property, they realized that there was an expansiveness of their use. We have worked with them over the years, and I think that their transformation into a movie studio that is allowing for companies such as Netflix and Amazon Prime and other things of similar ilk to be able to utilize the site is really a plus, not only for the surrounding community in terms of the use, but also for the continued marketability of this area. We're already in a highly industrial area, so this use certainly is compatible with the other uses that surround it. And we are extremely excited about the idea of having Stonecrest Studios. And we believe that this will be a great addition. We know that Councilmember Rob Turner has been very supportive of the film industry coming into the City of Stonecrest. We are certainly hopeful that you all will be equally excited about the proposed project. In terms of reaching out to Commissioner Davis Johnson, I certainly will do that, but, you know, quite honestly, not to be funny, but I just kind of want that 30 days to do what that 30 days does. They know what their obligation is. It gets sent over to the county attorney office as well as to the commissioners, and they either respond or they don't. And in this instance, I think as Jim has indicated in the past, they have not raised objections to prior annexations. And typically, they don't as long as the use is similar and the zoning is similar to what was already in place. They really don't have an ability to object. If we were asking for something that was more of an intense use, then they would have grounds for objections, but in fact, we're not. In some ways, our use is less intense than what's currently approved for the site. So with that, what I would like to do is, we do have a video. I think staff, and I'm very familiar with Ms. Jackson. We have worked together a number of times. And I think that we can probably jump to one slide. I'm going to ask Tim to take a little moment to kind of talk about what his objectives have been and how, you know, how he kind of landed here in this moment with the sound stages and who's on currently there. And then, after, sorry, after I show the slideshow, and I'll ask Tim to chime in, and then we'll be available to ask and answer any questions that you may have. Again, Shaw Almaxx is still utilizing one of the buildings off of Nola and Miller Road, which is the building that you see here. But there has been a desire to continue to use this as a sound studio on the site. You know that there's already been one annexation into the city of one of the buildings that was previously owned by Shaw Almaxx as well, which is the New Ground Studios that you see here on the site. What we will be doing is taking these additional buildings that you see here in the back and actually developing these buildings along with the office building that's there, which is also being utilized by many of the studios that like to have that kind of office space nearby, the sound stages. And we will be building additional soundstage and mill space on the site. And we feel like, in terms of the use, again, it's very compatible with the surrounding industrial uses. The O&amp;I that we have left is really for this office building, but now that we have moved in this direction, that's why we are asking for it to be rezoned to industrial. Certainly would be nice if the sound and movie industries didn't have to necessarily be in industrially zoned areas, but that's, you know, kind of what we have right at the moment, zoning ordinance, and that's how DeKalb has viewed it as being an M1 use, and that's right now how the city views it as well. So I'm going to go ahead and show the video, and then after that, we would love to be able to have Tim talk and then answer any questions that we have from there. So let me if I can get the video up. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Um, sorry, let me do it this way. Um, sorry, let me do it this way. Uh, here we go. So I'm gonna pause um uh or stop the video right there. Um, one of the things that um I wanted you all to be aware of, and Tim, I'm sure will speak to this a little bit, is that Shaw MX has acquired other parcels within the um my thing, uh the Snap Finger Industrial Park. So um there are multiple parcels that they already have that are already zoned um uh industrial. And so those um additional pictures that you saw on like Dividend Drive and Penn Circle and those things are things that are already currently zoned. Um, we are excited again about the continued expansion of the studio. Um, it is providing um an opportunity um for many of the smaller um uh studios to come in of or or produ- production companies to come in um to the site that are looking for something that is uniquely um uh the size that they need um for their projects. Um, instead of a lot of the larger movie studios, um this is serving some of the smaller uh in our minds, probably not small, but from from an industry's perspective, a smaller audience. Um, and so um with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Tim, because I know he's chomping at the bit to tell you all the wonderful things um about the studio, so go ahead.
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and Stonecrest staff, um I wanna thank you for the opportunity to talk about what we're planning on doing in this area. And um I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the applicant because I'm enmeshed in the architectural, engineering and design components. But actually, uh Stonecrest is owned by my wife, Pamela Shaw, who is a a multilingual businesswoman with a master's in business and uh very accomplished. And by all our research, we can determine Stonecrest will be the only woman-owned studio in the United States, which is exciting. Thankfully, that was only because Oprah shut hers down, otherwise we couldn't make that statement, so. Blessed. Um, we have been in Stone, in the Decatur area for, we actually had a building at um Benson Drive, which we sold to uh another company, Buchanan Auto Parts, um and then moved to this facility because it was intended to be a joint venture project with a large Austrian um multi-billion dollar conglomerate. Unfortunately, they imploded and we ended up with the entire campus, which was forty-two acres. For those who remember or old enough to remember, there's a few on this call, and when you went into banks, you picked your checks, you picked the sailing ship or the compass rose or whatever else, that was Harlan Clark, and this was their campus. And there was eleven hundred people working on this campus. Um, and it's been basically, a lot of it's been sitting vacant. When our joint venture partner pulled out, Almax moved forward and we are a global um multinational corporation uh with twenty locations from Jakarta to Delhi to Tianjin to Brisbane, Australia. And we supply equipment to the mining industry, the carpet industry. Um, also, people like Boeing um aerospace are customers over ours, so we're a large industrial conglomerate. Um, and our financial headquarters is Toronto, Canada, but our global headquarters is actually here in on Miller Road, which we're excited about. Um, and it's a lot of high-tech equipment, lasers, um robotic welders, equipment like the like that's at the location. So um right now, as we can well understand during pen- the pandemic, um having a hundred thousand square foot office complex um that's vacant um is not the most desirable uh building to own when offices are not being utilized because we're all doing this kind of thing that we're doing here right now. And so last year, because of the huge demand of the movie industry, we were approached by some companies to take on have utilizing the office building, which is not ideal. It's not an a sound stage, but it's an office building to do some work. So so far, um is anybody on this call um familiar with the TV show Sweet Magnolias?
Yeah.
If you are, then that's being shot on this campus right now. Um, also, Adam Sandler was walking around a couple of weeks ago because Happy Madison Productions is producing out um outlaws on our campus. Um, we've also had, um we have a Sony production here right now called Harold and the Purple Crayon. And we've had MacGyver and we had to turn away Apple recently. Um, so we've got a lot of marquee companies that want to do business in our area. Um, as uh Michelle mentioned, we have a a portfolio of properties that are all in Stonecrest except for this one. And we'd like to be in one jurisdiction, working with one team of people, and trying to deal with two different entities um is difficult. And we have done a lot of work with this whole campus was severed and there was a lot of work done. And I would say it was a little bit um slow-going and slugging with the Decatur folks and are the company, we sold off one of our other buildings to New Ground Studios, and actually, we're in negotiations to buy that property back so that we'll have all of the campus um back yeah under one roof. Um, one of the things that the the industry, the the film industry, there are obviously very big names such as Black Hall, um uh Eagle, um Three Ring, and of course Tyler Perry's and uh Trilith, which was the former uh Pinewood. They're all geared towards great big productions like the Marvel franchise, um Spider-Man, um things like the the Dwayne Austin and the Rock with Jungle Cruise. But what there's a huge demand for is for small episodic things like Sweet Magnolias. Smaller productions, smaller budgets, and they want to have basically their own space. What they all tell us is that if they're on a giant studio lot and the rock is there filming with a three hundred million dollar budget, they're they're small potatoes. So they love the fact that they have an ability to to potentially be in a small location. The second thing is, we'd welcome you to come tour the campus. It really is like an apple or a campus. It's rolling hills. It's got uh jogging trails. It's got a stream running through it. It's heavily wooded and it's our intention to keep that because that's what the film industry is telling us they want. They want that feeling. I hate when they go in and blast everything down and pave it all and it looks like something out of a a military installation, and that's not what we're doing. We're keeping that feel, that environmental feel that they really tell us that they want to see. Um, so one of the things obviously is that we have been filming here and it's a very quiet and not disturbing um industry because we have to hire sound engineers to be able to prove to them that it's very, very quiet inside the buildings. They can't have the sound of uh traffic or chainsaws. So, and there's been no complaints, obviously, about traffic or anybody on the campus because it's been going on while we're doing this right now. And we're now taking it to the next step and incorporating, we've done all the legal work to incorporate the studio and get it all together. Um, one of the things I think is it has a incredible tertiary effect um on employment. One of the things we do love about the campus is it's on a MARTA uh has a stop, so it's accessible to people with vehicles or without vehicles. And uh we could have, we have right now three or four hundred people back on a campus that were not previously working on this campus in the studio and movie industry. Um, we've been here in this area for twenty years. Um, we love the area. Um, I personally have a home. I mean, I'm from Toronto, Canada right now, but I have a home out in Snowville and uh and love the area and we continue to want to see it grow. Um, one of the things I think also is that um the jobs are high-paying jobs. They're not um certainly by no means are they um minimum wage. They're high-value propositions because they're trained and experienced people. And I think the opportunity going forward for Stonecrest and for Stonecrest Studios is tremendous. Um, there is a lot of work being done already. People are renting buildings in this area. Um, but no one's taken the step of going ahead and putting several hundred thousand square feet of sound stage in the area and making it um a a bona fide um studio complex. I think the other thing that I would like to suggest is that um we can't we can't see, um and obviously, this is a huge investment for us, as you guys can imagine, this is in the tens of millions of dollars. Um, and so we've done a lot of due diligence on what we want to be able to do in the area, what we want to accomplish. And we think it's absolutely the best use of this space right now. We will not be able to put, the hundred thousand square foot building, folks, is so huge. Um, you could put Hertz Rent-A-Car or Mercedes or somebody in it. It's that huge. And and we can't find a space for people to use it, but right now that place is fully booked and it is every, is bursting at the seams. So we found a use for it and we've taken a building that otherwise would not have value. And of course, that means taxes and that means revenue for everybody, and that's all a good story. So I I didn't do a long presentation because we're not trying to do some something really outside and crazy in the box. Um, we've hired an amazing team with Zanardo and some of the other people, and our intention is to make this a showcase that everybody's proud to go to and see. Um, it'll have a fantastic marquee when you drive up as if you're driving onto a studio. And the buildings, we're making sure the buildings are not just square boxes, that they've got some architectural. Um, it uh brushes and accents on them to give them some kind of that old retro feel. I'm a little bit nostalgic. I love the sort of the retro nineteen fifty's and sixty's um kind of feel, and that's what we're hoping to be able to do. As as far as some of the other jobs, obviously, these sound stage um.
Mr. Shaw, I don't mean to cut you off, but I want you to save some time in the event we have someone that wants to speak in uh in opposition of this case.
Ms. Jackson, no problem. Thank you. I can pause right now and we'll, I'll take any questions or or comments.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shaw. Um, Commissioners, do you have any question of Mr. Shaw or Ms. Battle? Commissioner Mathis.
Commissioner. Thank you so much. I do have a few questions. I've made some notes already. I've had conversation um earlier today regarding this property. And my questions are very minor. I I'm concerned. Okay, we're looking at nineteen acres altogether, and so I saw the buildings that you presented in your presentation. Will there be any additional buildings added to the site that within that vacant uh lot area there? Are you intending on adding more buildings?
Um, Commissioner Mathis, no. What you saw in that was was more than what we want to have on there. Um, the initial expansion will be going into the additional properties at Truman uh Dividend and Miller Road. The other Miller Road property is literally a couple hundred yards up the road. And uh no, there's no additional. Um, we don't want to increase the density. We want to keep that campus feel.
Thanks for answering that question. My second question, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, uh with regard to the residences. Now, I understand there's going to be a buffer of some sort that will separate that location from the residential locations. How much of a buffer are you, I'm talking about, putting?
Believe the buffer is seventy-five feet. That's what's required under the ordinance based on what's adjacent to the site. Um, can pull up the site plan again uh to show that, but um we have to have the buffer that is required under zoning ordinance adjacent to residentially zoned property. So you can see here, it's a seventy-five.
Okay, so that's seventy-five by seventy-five? Or just seventy-five all the way around?
Seventy-five all the way around? Adjacent to the residential properties? I don't, I'm not sure what you mean by.
You answered it. That's fine. Thank you. Okay, thanks so much.
I have a quick question. Can you hear me?
Yes, Commissioner Hollis.
Okay, uh, my question is 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 minor as well. And when you talked about the job opportunity, I was wondering, because I know that there are number of universities within the area, will there be an opportunity for internship for students that are in the industry or seeking to be in the industry?
Um, yes, Commissioner Hollis, let let me just say this. We already have a two um recently graduated students in the film industry that are working in Stonecrest Studios um servicing Sony and um uh Netflix and so forth right now. And what happens is, in this industry, there's there's a requirement for grips. There's a requirement for uh lighting technicians. There's all kinds of things, and our intention is to rent out a lot of the equipment that is normally done by subcontractors. And so we see an uh a fairly substantial staff of people. Um, by that, I mean, it could be forty, fifty people that are out to sites. And not only that, we're a base camp for, for example, Sweet Magnolias um is filming in a lot of the studio spaces in here right now, but they do location shoots. So they're all over the the county doing location things, and they have to have trucks delivered and so forth. So I think there's a tremendous opportunity for that, and I I agree, that would be a uh as far as we're concerned, it'd be a good addition to what we're talking about.
Hi, Ms. Up.
Thank you, Commissioner Hollis.
Okay, thank you so much. That's all I have.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question.
Okay, Commissioner Walker.
Uh, yes, all this sounds very exciting. Uh, is there a timeframe on when this would actually start for this this area? When, uh, Mr. Shaw, do you have any kind of timeframe?
Yes, Commissioner Walker, um we have already done the engineering drawings on the buildings. We have quotations from the um the building, um it metal building fabricated companies. Um, our intention is to give a deposit after we get a a positive um affirmation hopefully from this meeting. We'll be giving deposits out. We'll be beginning disturbance um permits to start getting land cleared, putting the concrete down. Our intention is to have this facility up and running by May thirtieth um at the latest um with with the number of the buildings. All the other buildings that Penn and Truman and um up Miller Road are not part of that. Um, we are looking to clear the backlot, which is a Penn Circle, which is what you saw, the big screen, green screen. But um we're ready to chomping at the bit and we're ready to go. We've got all our things ducks in a row.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Thank you, Commissioner Walker. Okay, being that there are Commissioner Mathis.
Yes, I'm sorry to have to ask again. I just want some clarity. Now, you're saying that it's nineteen point one acres, but you're asking for annexation for nine point eight nine acres?
Uh, we're only asking for um the annexation of the property that is currently located in Decatur County. And that includes um the track, what's called Track Three, I believe, one here. Um, it is this this track here and this track here. Those are the two tracks um that we are seeking to um annex in. And that's roughly the nineteen acres, Track Three and Track Four. So it is nineteen acres.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions of the applicant? All right, thank you. Saying that there are none, is there any opposition to the application? That wish to speak or if Ms. Lowe has any oppositions? She can read them at this time.
There are no comments.
Thank you, Ms. Lowe. And I don't see any persons on the call in opposition. No hands being raised. So at this time, I would like to close the public hearing on this application, move into discussion with the Commissioners. All right, Commissioners.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner. Commissioner Mathis.
Thank you for recognizing me. I'm not showing any issues or concerns. I mean, they're already using the property for the same purpose, and so they're just needing to expand and continue on with the same thing. Now, with regard to the conditions that are there, are we able to adhere to making sure that those conditions are being met in the event of an approval?
Well, I know that the applicant, uh the planning department has listed some some um an outline of things that they want to see done, and the applicant has been open to meet And the applicant has been open to meet the requirements of the planning departments were to adhere to the recommendation of the planning department.
Thank you. Those are, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hollis?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. Well, Commissioner Walker?
I, I have no further questions.
Okay, and Commissioner Edie?
No questions.
All right, thank you. Well, you know, I, I've seen this property. I've, I've been by this property. Matter of fact, my office is around the corner from the property and I also live in the area where this property is being proposed. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval on the application to the council with the conditions that were recommended by the planning department to be a part of the application.
I second the motion.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded by Commissioner Edie and Commissioner Hollis. At this time, I'd like to go to vote. All in favor of approving the application, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I let the record reflect, it's unanimous that all five Commissioners have voted to recommend approval. So congratulations, Mr. Shaw. And we look forward to seeing Stonecrest Studios do some great things. And welcome to the city of Stonecrest, hopefully, or at least you're recommended to be in the city of Stonecrest. And let's see what the city council says next week.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
All right.
Mr. Commissioner, thank you on behalf and to all the other Commissioners. And, and I've got to say, it's been great working with Jim and his staff. They've been absolutely a delight. And that's what we were hoping for is that we would see a much easier transition to getting up and going. We have a very aggressive time schedule. And I'm looking forward to inviting you all to, when that first building has a production coming on. It's quite exciting to get a back, back screen tour and so forth. And we'll look forward to making an event out of that. So thank you all and appreciate the approval. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
Mr. Shaw, I look forward to that tour.
I'll try and see if I can get somebody famous there. It, it is kind of unreal, folks. Can I take a two-second to tell you a quick story? I'm down in front of the building waiting to meet with some people from Columbia. And I'm standing there and all these extras are all circling around and the lady walks up to me and she says, are you the reporter? I said, excuse me, man. She said, are you the reporter that's in the scene right now? You're supposed to be inside. I said, no, I'm not. And then she said, well, what the heck are you doing here? I said, well, I, I own the building. She said, no, you don't. What are you really doing here? And I said, ma'am, I really do own the building. And she said, oh, okay. Well, do you want to be a reporter? And I said, you know what? So there's all these great people. The, the people are fantastic. All the Sweet Magnolias staff are great. I missed Adam Sandler, but I'll try and get you that view next time. So, all right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. And Commissioners, that was the only item on the agenda for tonight. Yeah, I will entertain a motion to adjourn if you like.
So move, Mr. Chair.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, properly moved and seconded. So everyone have a good night and.
It's nice to meet you guys.
All right, thank you.
Look forward to working with you, Kajra.
Thank you, same here.
Yeah, welcome, Ms. Jackson. Looking forward to working with you as well. Everyone, you all have a good night and a safe night. And here's to a new year.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
New year.